You must be pretty serious.
Watch out.
Thank you for coming to the school committee on the road at West Elementary. Let's start off with a pledge.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Did you see the lunch schedule?
Okay, we have a tour scheduled first. Mr. Williams is going to take us on a tour of West Elementary. And then we're going to come back and we're going to have a very full night tonight. So we'll come back at what, 7 o'clock? Around 7 o'clock we'll be back in here. Until then?
Edward Nikolos was superintendent of schools in the Plymouth Carver Regional School District. He served the district for 23 years and 6 months. Gary Anderson was an elementary classroom teacher at Manhamit Elementary School for 35 years. And Betty Ragazzini, she was 23 years and 5 months as a technology services secretary. So these three individuals dedicated a lot of time and effort from their lives for this district. And we can all join in a moment of silence for them. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to look on Mrs. Burgess's agenda. She printed it out for me. So, we're going to start off with comments from the public, general public and/or others. I see a young man here who would like to address us. Mr. Moody.
So for those of you who don't know me, mostly the board does, but some of the folks in the audience may not. My name is John Moody. I'm the chairman of the Advisory and Finance Committee here in Plymouth. One of the things that I undertook as the chair of the committee this year was to try to address the issue of having a full-day kindergarten and funding the public safety needs that the town manager had recommended. As you know, from our joint meeting that we had back in January, a good portion of the public safety personnel that were requested by the town manager were cut back. So at the time, the estimated value of reinstating those public service personnel was about half a million dollars. So sort of arbitrarily, I asked the various chairs of the budget subcommittees to, as a part of their subcommittee sessions, try to obtain a certain amount of money from each of the subcommittees. As you may know, or may not know, the budget subcommittee for the schools requested a reduction of $250,000. A lot of money. And really, the objective there was to create options for the town as far as trying to fund those public safety needs. So the question I've really encouraged my committee to address, and which I would encourage you to think about or to consider, is how can we deliver both full-day kindergarten and public safety staffing needs in Plymouth without eliminating programs or services and without increasing the overall town budget? Because that's been my objective as the chairman of the Finance and Advisory Committee this year. The budget subcommittees thus far have identified a net savings of almost $486,000 on the town side of the budget, without cutting or affecting any of its programs or services. $450,000 of that, or 92% of that, was found in areas that I like to call the gray areas of the budget. They aren't programs, they aren't services, they don't really impact what we deliver to the public. And those gray areas consist of estimates about costs and revenues that we may make in the early part of the budgeting process. They include assumptions about personnel, how many retirees we may have or may not have, how many personnel we may lose in the course of a fiscal year, as well as work volumes and timelines, and as well as a wide range of other projections and estimates that, as you all know, are done as a part of the budgeting process. So just to give you a sense of where the subcommittees have found some of this money, in terms of budget errors and omissions, just data entry errors, items that were not removed from the budget that should have been, there is a total of $8,000 that was found, which was 1.7%. Personnel cost changes, which revolve around such things as retirements, people who decide to leave the employee of the town, whatever the case may be, and they plan to do that either at the end of the fiscal year, 2016, which we're currently in, or sometime during fiscal year 2017. The subcommittees have found a total of $27,879, or about 6%, 5.7%. In addition, there are activities where we conducted some additional analysis after asking the town department heads to revisit some of their assumptions. Primarily, these dollars were found in the area of energy. So there was a total of $90,000, or 18.5% of our findings, that were related to energy. And that revolved mostly around the changing energy costs and the projections for what energy is going to cost through the end of 2018. The last category is sort of an interesting category. It's really the reconsideration of initial assumptions. So when we sit down and we start a budget, we have certain assumptions that we make, and we carry that through our budget process. One of the things that I think is always important is, once you get through the budget process and you have what you think is a final budget, is that you ask yourself, have any of our assumptions changed that would alter this budget substantially? So in the category of reconsideration of initial assumptions, the subcommittees were able to find $324,365, or about 67% of the total savings that we've been able to identify to date. So because the budget process runs for several months, I think that last step of the budget process where you look back at what were our assumptions and do they still hold true, such as we did with energy costs and looking at, you know, what's fuel going to cost 18 months out? I think that's an important part of the budget process. So $486,000 is where we're at. If the Advisory and Finance Committee, which conducts its budget hearings on Wednesday, approves that full amount of savings, we would be about $170,000 short of what we need to fully reinstate the public safety needs that the town manager had recommended to the board of selectmen. I'm hoping that this committee, the school administrative staff, can take some time, not necessarily between now and Wednesday, but certainly before town meeting, and just take a quick iterative look back at the budget and see if there is the opportunity for any savings along the lines that I've sort of pointed out to you are potentially possible. So that's essentially what I wanted to share with you tonight. I'll certainly answer any questions if anybody has any.
Anybody have any questions? I would just say that we've put a lot of time and effort into formulating the budget, and a lot of the suggestions you came up with tonight are very good ones, and we have the good fortune of having Gary Costin, who has already done many of the things you've already suggested. So he's already planned out a lot of the energy costs and everything, as you know. We've found a lot of savings in energy over the years, so there isn't room in our budget to find a lot more there until we do some more creative things down the road. But we've already looked at the budget and already reviewed it, we've approved it, we already, I'd be interested, you mentioned all the subcommittees for the Finance Committee, but you didn't mention the Education Subcommittee. And they didn't come up with anything in our line item, nothing in our budget where they made any suggestions, other than cut $250,000. So they've already been through the budget. We dedicated one day to their review. We had three days scheduled, they felt they didn't need the additional time. So I think we've done the due diligence, we appreciate you coming tonight and pointing it out to us, but we can reassure you that we've done the due diligence and we think we have a tight, solid budget. Any cuts we would make would be against programs, there would be a program impact. So we don't see the need to do something like that. And I think your Subcommittee agreed with us, because we went through all of it with your Subcommittee, and I even had a breakout session with your Subcommittee. And we addressed additional items like transportation, and they were comfortable with the answers. So I think we're good with what we have.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Any other members of the community? Then we'll hear first from South High. Veronica.
So we have a few items for today. First, we'd like to wish good luck to our students who are going to the Skills USA District Competition this Friday. They've worked really hard to prepare for this competition, and we know they're going to represent our school well. They had their acknowledgement dinner the Tuesday before vacation, and we're really excited for this opportunity for them. Next, we have the Winter Color Guard and Percussion Show. Every year, we host a Color Guard and Percussion Show, which is the combined ensembles between Plymouth North and Plymouth South. And that show will be at Plymouth North this Sunday at 1:00 p.m. Also, we, on the same line of thinking, we have our combined musical. This year, we're doing Music Man. We're really excited for that. And it will be Friday and Saturday, March 4th and 5th at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, the 6th, at 2:00 p.m. So we hope many people can come out. I know the cast has done a lot of work, and so has the orchestra and all the other people who put their work into it. So really excited for that. Also, we, at Plymouth South, we participated in Go Red for Women Day on the Friday before vacation. And this is a fundraiser and awareness campaign for the American Heart Association. So we're proud to say we participated in that, and it went very well. There was a lot of people in red that day. And then, spring sports signups are tomorrow, right after school, so we hope to see lots of students there for that. And we have a Grade 9 and 10 Parent Night about financing your college education. And that will be on Thursday, March 3rd, from 6:30 to 8:30. Just so, there'll be lots of information there for parents of underclassmen, just to start taking a look at how to finance college education. And last, we have a couple announcements for seniors. We'll be ordering caps and gowns tomorrow during school, bring $20, I think that's happening during study. And yearbooks are on sale until this Thursday, and they can be bought online or with a paper order form. So that's what's going on at South.
Thank you.
Thank you.
North, do we have anyone from North tonight?
Mr. Begley, I received an email from Max Tripp, who was scheduled to come tonight. He actually went to PCIS.
Oops.
And sent his apologies for not being here tonight. So he did send an email, and it is acknowledged. I told him, "Don't worry, don't stress about it." So he was planning on coming, he went to PCIS instead of West Elementary.
Very good. Next, old business, anybody have any updates for us? For any, we have several things, I think, that we're touching on tonight, that'll be... New business? Anybody? You guys feel like so far away tonight. New business? Anything? Moving right along. Superintendent's report.
Yes, tonight I have a few items to report on. I think a lot of us are aware of the weather conditions that we had last week during our winter break. The temperatures were below zero in some instances. Our buildings fared well, with the exception of South Middle and South Elementary School. We had a couple of pipes freeze, sprinkler heads at South Middle and South Elementary School, and our maintenance crew was diligent in repairing everything to allow buildings to open up for today. They were actually done by Friday of last week. But very little disruption at all in the buildings. But again, I think our buildings did very well. We actually increased our night setback time that we usually have, or temperature that we have on our buildings during the most difficult evenings that we had for temperatures. So our buildings are doing well, and like I said, we did have a couple issues with really cold weather, as I'm sure many of you have heard news stories of schools around the state during that period of time. I want to remind the board, the school committee, that tomorrow is the topping-off ceremony that we have at Plymouth South High School. It is at 11:00 a.m. to noon, and that will be at the Plymouth South High School site. We're making sure that you park at the Plymouth South Middle School parking lot. On the north end of the parking lot, you will see cars parked there, and we will have some level of direction on word of parks. That'll be an exciting day for us tomorrow. There's also an update on the engineering robotics program that came in front of you about three weeks ago. The team did qualify for ABC's Battle Bots Competition in Los Angeles, California, and they will be competing on April vacation. And it's a very, I looked at the schedule, and it's extremely rigorous, and there's a possibility that they could be competing for some cash prizes. It'll be televised on ABC. Our team has to actually get to the point where they will be in that televised live situation, and we will communicate that with our general public when we do find out. So I did talk with Mr. Bastoni last Friday, and he's very excited to be in this position. So they have a lot of work to do. I saw the robot Saturday morning, and it's fascinating what these children are doing, not children, young adults. And they actually did a lot of work last week on it. And keep in mind that this is major sponsorship from a number of partners here, Plymouth Energy, other groups. They are actually paying for the students to fly and get there. So I think it's a remarkable opportunity for our kids. Last Thursday night, I attended the precinct chairs meeting. I know Mr. Begley was there, and we had the opportunity to meet with the precinct chairs in Plymouth to discuss important points to the budget. There were a number of questions, I think I filled it questions for about an hour. I think we answered a lot of questions they had on the budget. I actually forwarded some more answers to the precinct chairs today to kind of give them some more information on some of the things that we are working on within our budget. And then tonight, we have copies of the strategic plan, final draft, a hard copy for you. It represents a great deal of work, and we plan to be handing this document out to some key stakeholders of our community. Of course, this document will be online for all to view and use. Our principals will have copies available in schools, we'll have this in libraries across the community. We will also have copies of this available to precinct members and town meeting members for April town meetings. So I think it's a good read, if you have an opportunity to page through it. I know a lot of you were very involved in reviewing it and making suggestions for us to have it updated. So just want to highlight and thank all of the members of our community that really helped us compose, compile, revise this document. And the last thing I have to report on tonight, and you'll hear a little bit after one of the other field trips that we have tonight, I am in the midst of planning Dream Ride 2, and I know some of you probably don't know what that is, but it's a bike ride that I'll be doing with some support. Maybe some people from the left here will ride with me. I know Ms. Badger is training right now, but we will be riding from Washington, D.C. to Boston, Boston to Plymouth. We've actually, in the last couple of weeks, have partnered with the Plymouth 400, so we'll be doing a history wellness tour of the East Coast, spreading the good word of take care of your body so you can live for the future. So hopefully, that will be a nice message we send, and we'll talk a little bit about it later in the field trip request. So with that said, Mr. Begley, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. You want to handle the retirements tonight?
Yes.
We have three.
Yeah, let's have Dr. Campbell, he's got it open, so we'll give him something to do. Go right ahead.
I'll try to do Dr. Gould justice. We have four retirements to announce tonight. Judy Bradley, science teacher at Plymouth Health Middle School, up to 39 years, retiring at the end of the year. Nancy Franks, 5th grade teacher at Indianbrook, after 32 years of service, will be retiring at the end of the year. Elizabeth Hogland, 1st grade classroom teacher, after 18 years, South Elementary School. And Jane Kearney, cafeteria worker at Plymouth South High School, after 12 years of service.
I'd like to thank these four individuals for their combined 101 years of service to the district, and wish them a happy retirement.
101 years. Let that sink in. Correspondence, Ms. Hunt.
Yes, there are three pieces of correspondence tonight. A thank-you letter from South High Principal Patricia Frye to the technical studies staff in appreciation of their efforts to bring about another wonderful tech expo for students and parents, all the while juggling midterms, semester change, and the submission of grades. The next two letters are from science coordinator Allison Riordan, and are related to the recent science fair. She addressed thanks to the Coca-Cola Company for a substantial donation of water and soda, which helped, sorry, I have new glasses, I can't read anything, which helped to make the science fair a great success in that participants enjoyed the drinks along with pizza and cookies, as did the volunteers who judged the projects. Mrs. Riordan expressed appreciation for the continued commitment and support in celebrating the students' hard work. She commended the Coca-Cola Company for being a large part of the celebration. The next letter from Mrs. Riordan is to the South High Culinary Program. She thanked Mr. Hannah and Mr. Levy for the generous donation of food for the annual high school science fair, an astounding act of kindness. She expressed her gratitude for the work of the students and staff of the culinary program, and commended the vocational technical studies program as being representative of the best that education has to offer. Mrs. Riordan said that not only is this program dedicated to providing students with the highest quality of hands-on instruction available, but it is also dedicated to improving and serving both our district and the community.
Very good, thank you. Now we have our school improvement plan for tonight, which is the Federal Furnace Elementary School, and I see the team is here, so Dr. Miestas?
Yes, I'd like to ask Principal Camaro to come up, and I know Mr. Sylvester is here, and her team is here, so want to welcome them to West Elementary, coming across the border over to this side of town, so. So welcome.
Thank you, everyone. I'm not sure I know how to use this, so we might have to pause in a minute. The red one? She's getting it up. All right, we're going to do introductions, and then we'll... Okay. So thank you, everybody. I have a few members of our school council here, and I wanted to recognize everyone on our school council. We also have some in the audience and a couple who were not able to make it. So here with me, I have Mr. Sylvester, our vice principal. I have, to his right, is Andrea Holmes, a parent, and Louise Pizzano, parent and co-chair of school council. Also here with us tonight are classroom teacher Karen Drolette, and our community representative Lee Harrigan is here as well in the audience. And two people not able to make it, another classroom teacher, Marianne O'Connell, Ms. Marianne O'Connell, and parents Jeanette Cassot and Lori Stevenson, were not able to make it tonight, but we thank them for their contributions to our council. So we do have a PowerPoint coming up for some visual support for our presentation, but we can start without that. So last year, it feels like we were just here, because it feels like we're sitting in Federal Furnace in the cafeteria. And last year, when we presented this plan, we were there. So I have some of the highlights from that presentation that we did, and then the updates for you. So we will all have a little bit to say tonight, and we have some students to speak virtually, as well as a part of the presentation. So our first goal is to continue, was to continue to expand the implementation, continue and expand the implementation of our comprehensive positive behavior intervention and support system, the PBIS system, which was something that many schools across the district have been working on. And that fits in our big picture of becoming a safe and supportive school where every child's basic needs are met, so that they can access higher brain functions of learning, collaboration, and creativity. So that was, that's our first goal, we presented that to you last year. And so we have some updates on that. And one of those is that we broadened the scope a little bit. Instead of just focusing on PBIS, we decided to focus more on the safe and supportive schools piece, because really, student behavior is an indicator of many underlying factors. Oftentimes, students are feeling unsafe about their surroundings for whatever reason. So we broadened that scope a little bit. So we, instead of re-establishing our PBIS committee as we had set forth to do in this goal, we established a Safe and Supportive Schools Committee. And that committee's goal is to create a more safe and supportive community at Federal Furnace, including behavioral support. So the PBIS has not been forgotten, it's just under that larger umbrella. So we wanted to let you know that also, as a part of that, we were seeking some outside support as well, because this is a challenge to create a safe and supportive community for all, where everybody can learn. So we applied to participate in a special program, and our school was selected from among 35 Massachusetts schools to work with the Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative, a joint collaboration of Massachusetts Advocates for Children and Harvard Law School, to use a planning process that helps schools to create a safe and supportive learning environment for all students. So through that, so we did apply, and five schools out of the 35 were selected, and we were one of them. So we have been receiving ongoing consultations since September from the TLPI group to support us as we go through this process and identify our priorities and develop and implement action plans. This is also a research study, so the American Institute for Research, a well-established school research organization, is studying this process, and it will take place from now through June of 2017. So that's a really exciting process, and it involves a large group of stakeholders. We have a team of about 12 staff who work together monthly with our consultants on this process. So I'm hoping that the PowerPoint comes up soon, because that's really the most exciting part here. Okay, that's great. So you can see that there's a slide there, a little bit about the Safe and Supportive School legislation that is in place in Massachusetts, that we're looking at this as a process, not a program, and we have identified many priorities. So then I went to some of the statistics we had last year. So, then I went to some of the statistics we had last year in our presentation. Yay. There's the plan. So, 89% of our parents, when they were surveyed last year for the plan, felt that Federal Furnace provided a positive emotionally and physically safe environment for students, and that was up from 87% from two years prior. So, that was pretty good, but we still wanted to make it better. We want to change some of the perceptions that we saw in our survey, some of the comments, such as, because when students are unaware of consequences for unexpected or disruptive behavior, sometimes there's a perception that there aren't any consequences. So, that's one of our charges as part of our safe and supportive committee, not only for the students who are having challenges with behavior, but for students who are watching that and what the impact is on them. So, some of our goals are to proactively prevent disruption by creating a toolkit of strategies and resources for all classrooms and learning spaces, a consistent response when any disruptions do occur, and the consistent use of restorative practices to address the needs of all of our learners. So, those are some of the priorities for our safe and supportive school plan. So, another piece of this goal was to continue with our Pride, Respect, and Responsibility initiative that we had started a few years back, and that's recognizing students for all the positive things that we do. And a second one was to continue with our Peaceful Bus program. So, we have a couple quick video links that our students produced, that Kristen's going to pull up for us now, and one is about specifically the continuation of the Peaceful Bus program and what that means to our students, and the other is about our Pride, Respect, and Responsibility initiative at Federal Furnace. And if it takes a moment, we do have Andrea prepared to say a little more about Pride, Respect, and Responsibility as well, but we'll see.
Peaceful Bus started in 2010 at FFES. We have been using the Peaceful Bus program for a few years to help cut down on student behavior problems in our school buses. It also has created a sense of responsibility and community building at our school. Our school meets three times a year with the bus leader, the bus driver, staff members, and the students on each bus to work on lessons that have been created by a company called Hasselton that we bought into. You can find this program on a website called Hasselton.org. Each lesson revolves around helping the students control their own behavior, accept responsibility for themselves while riding a bus, helping make their bus ride a safe experience to and from school. Students will also work closely with their bus drivers and peers and learn how to respect not only the bus driver, but their peers as well. This program also helps all students enhance their ability to focus on learning in the classroom as well. We are here to let you know just how Peaceful Bus has been working for us for the past few years at FFES. Then we spoke to DJ and Parker, fifth graders, DJ's on black bus and Parker's on purple bus, to see how they answered the same exact questions. How do you promote a peaceful ride to and from school?
We show the younger ones how we act on a bus. For example, we sit down responsibly, and then they listen to us and sit down responsibly.
If you see any problems or issues going on in your bus, how do you handle it? Example, if you see a student being bullied on your bus, what can you do about it?
I either tell the bus driver, or I make sure that bully stops forever.
How are you and the students on your bus trying to make your bus a peaceful one?
We show each other what we do. We don't just yell and scream and scream. We talk quietly to our peers.
What are the things you like about meeting with your leaders and peers about Peaceful Bus?
I like telling the bus driver our point of view, and then seeing the bus driver's point of view of how we act, and it shows us how we could be a better bus.
Cool. How do you promote a peaceful ride to and from school?
Well, I make sure that everyone is okay and that no one is having a problem.
If you see any problems or issues going on on your bus, how do you handle it? For example, if you see a student being bullied, what can you do about it?
Well, seeing as though I'm a fifth grader, one of the older kids, I can make the person who is bullying the other kid stop, because I have more power.
How are the students on your bus trying to make your bus a peaceful one?
Well, they're trying to make it more peaceful by mostly supervising the kids that we know can get a little bit more out of hand in making sure that they aren't bullying anyone.
What are the things you like about meeting with your leaders and peers about Peaceful Bus?
Well, I like meeting with them, because it will make the ride safer, friendlier, and it will definitely have an impact on the ride, because seeing as though we're talking about the problems, kids will know and be more aware of the problems, so they can solve it.
How do you promote a peaceful ride to and from school?
I like to report anything that goes bad, so I make the bus more peaceful and more safe.
If you see any problems or issues going on on your bus, how do you handle it? Example, if you see a student being bullied, what can you do about it?
Um, I either tell them to stop or report them to the bus driver, because my bus driver will make them stop.
How are the students on your bus trying to make your bus a peaceful one?
Um, honestly, they're, they are picking up any trash, um, not, like, if my bus driver, if he has a headache, like, they would just quiet down instantly.
What are the things you like about meeting with your leaders and peers about Peaceful Bus?
Well, I have many, many friends on my bus, so I like meeting with them a lot.
Thanks for watching our Peaceful Bus production. This has been Nicole and...
Parker.
And a person that has been behind the camera the whole time.
Kaitlyn. And a special thanks to Mrs. Drolette, who coordinated this whole production.
Now we have a few words to help you stay safe on your bus. Peaceful Bus is the way to go. If we're doing something wrong, we go now.
We teach each other P-R-R, Pride, Respect, and Responsibility. We use and wear voices, stay in our seats. That's just basic pride, respect, and responsibility.
We teach each other what to do, then my bus ride is safe for me and you.
And we can probably just play the very next one, which is a little bit shorter. It tells about the Pride, Respect, and Responsibility initiative at Federal Furnace.
Morning from F-F TV News, and I have a question for you. Have you ever been rewarded for doing something good? Well, here at F-F TV, we reward our students with links.
We asked a FFES student why he got a link.
Well, when my friend Carter, we have instruments on Friday at a different time than when I was, like, at the door, when we were leaving, I'm like, oh, I forgot that, then we, then I went in back to our classroom and got the instruments. Then he, I saw him at the door, and he's like, oh, thanks for, um, when, thanks for giving me my instrument back.
We asked student Noah, what his parents thought about his winnings?
Um, I don't think my parents really knew. I think they were proud.
We asked Principal Miss Camaro, if she thinks the link system's good.
Yes, I do. I think it's very similar to what Mrs. Butifwoko does in the library with our Where's Waldo or Fact Monster, that, you know, many, many students put in the effort. That goes academically and behaviorally, and it's nice to be recognized every once in a while. So, we always say that we're proud of all of our students, and they should be proud of themselves for their behavior, whether it's recognized by an adult or not, but that it's very important for students to be highlighted for demonstrating pride, respect, and responsibility.
Yes, Ms. Camaro, what are her favorite links that they were drawing?
Um, I really like seeing the ones where students made a conscious effort to do something that's not typical, such as helping a friend out without being asked, offering to include someone in play at recess or in the lunchroom, cleaning up without being asked, being courteous and helpful to staff members without being asked, noticing that something needs to be done. So, it's those, those actions that kind of go out of the ordinary that I love seeing on those slips.
Here's Ms. Wyatt, our teacher, and how and why she gets out links.
Well, our school has a system for pride, respect, responsibility, and when we see a student who's showing particular pride or respect in themselves, or showing responsibility for the building, that's a time when we, as teachers, give that child a link. They've earned a link. I love the link system. I love that we get a chance that, to give those kids who are doing something wonderful a chance to shine and acknowledge those kids that do something in particular, and it doesn't have to be huge. Sometimes it's picking up a piece of trash off of the ground, or helping a friend who drops their book. The little things that, that make you extra special, and those extra special kids deserve a link at those times.
Well, now you know what goes on in school. Hopefully, you'll get a link and remember. I'm Paige Mullin with Ed TV News.
Thank you. And now Andrea Holmes has a parent perspective on our Pride, Respect, and Responsibility, and a little bit more from a teacher who sent us an email who couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you. The R-R slips and certificates have definitely had a positive impact on the school. You know, it's definitely important for students to take pride, respect, and responsibility in their own actions, and how they treat others, and how they treat the school, you know, in general. You know, it's definitely important to reinforce these behaviors and recognize these positive behaviors. Usually, sometimes the negative things, you know, may come up more often than the positives. So, I think that these positives that are being highlighted is great for the school. When the students, you know, receive the slips, they're very proud. When my son received his, he was so proud, he came right home to tell me. And when they have the assemblies and they get the certificates, I mean, the other students are cheering for the students receiving the certificates, and they're celebrating their positive behavior, which I think is great for the whole school. And the students that receive the certificates and slips, you know, set a good example for students who may be struggling with those behaviors, and, you know, gives them something to work towards. And I think just promoting these pride, respect, and responsibility aspects will, in turn, help the academic learning environment, as well as the social environment, and just enhance the school day for all the children. And I just wanted to add, Marianne O'Connell, who's on our committee, who's not here tonight, I just wanted to add her perspective, something that she sees. She said that one student, upon receiving a certificate, quietly tucked it into her school folder, so that she could look at it often and be reminded of her success. What a wonderful way to build a young lady's confidence. Other students who have earned P-R-R slips have noted the number of slips they have earned on posters they created for our recent student council elections. The proud, smiling students in the photos taken of the P-R-R slip and certificate recipients tell the story better than any words we could say. So, I think that they're very proud of themselves, and that's, that's evident. So, I think it's had a great success.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. We're going to move on to other goals, and I will say, we won't spend this much time on each of our other goals. We already did address this slide. Our second goal was about technology, and you've already seen our students using technology. They did work on producing those videos. We did have to edit a little bit out in the end, making sure that kids who weren't supposed to be on TV, weren't on it, and whatnot, but they're doing a really great job with the Ed TV. Thank you to Jen Mulaney, who's working with us at the elementary schools now, and that's been huge. Our kids are using many things, iPads. In our pictures here, you can see us using Chromebooks in the classroom, and also a number of different stations. So, our goal was to foster an increased emphasis on the use of technology to enhance academic achievement for all students at all levels. And the big picture, why are we doing this? Because our world is always changing, so we're trying to foster 21st century learning is always a goal, and technology, for the sake of technology, is not our goal. Our goal is really to use it purposefully. We're using it a ton for communicating about what's going on in our school, and I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but I believe Louise Pizzano has a little bit more to say about technology.
Yeah. Just want to add to what Trina said, from the perspective of a technology industry professional. So, by day, I'm a technology consultant to large industrial companies. I help them implement large-scale enterprise-wide technology solutions. So, I see on a daily basis how technology is evolving and how companies have to adapt to it, both for their workforces and their, you know, customers. So, part of our goal as a council, from a technology perspective, is to, you know, better equip our students for their future environments by allowing them to use technology tools, you know, in a way that resembles how adults, you know, use them in their, you know, daily lives in the real world. If you think about the environment that a lot of us went to, you know, college in, or even, you know, high schools, depending on where you are, you know, where you are in the spectrum, we used to see lots of dedicated computer labs. Those are very hard to find in a college or, you know, in a work environment now. You know, most companies in colleges utilize mobile platforms almost exclusively now, and that's, that's, you know, the world these kids are going to be graduating into, whether they're in elementary school or, you know, high school at this point. So, one of our initiatives I feel really strongly about is our goal of doing away with the existing computer lab and reallocating and redistributing the resources, you know, throughout the school. Specifically locating the mobile PC carts in the library in, you know, media center makes a great deal of sense, because really, you're integrating, you know, technology and media into the library curriculum, and you're allowing students to learn and research in really a 21st century, you know, manner. I mean, that's, that's the reality. Additionally, and, you know, related to this, I want to make comment on the implications of these technology initiatives on technology-based testing. Obviously, there's a lot of opinions out there on standardized testing, and I want to open up that can of worms. But if I just think about, you know, just the general strategy of using the technology-based version of PARC, I think it makes such a great deal of sense in terms of preparing our students for the future they're going to. Regardless of what you think about standardized testing, technology isn't going anywhere, and students can either have a tough time trying to deal with it now from a testing perspective, or they can have a much tougher time later in life trying to figure it out in their professional lives. You know, implementing technology solutions in my professional life, I've watched workers struggle to keep up, and some of them plan will not make it. That's, you know, the reality. So, I think we need to be doing everything we can do with, you know, within reason to prepare our, you know, students, you know, for that future life.
Thank you. So, some of the things our students are doing, in addition to the television, they're doing blogging, responses to literacy, obviously, a lot of the writing. They use QR codes on, on different things. The one that was mentioned recently was posters for their student council campaigns. So, when people went up to a poster, you could scan a QR code, and you could see a video or a multimedia presentation created by that candidate for a student council office. So, we really are trying to use it for authentic purposes, not just for the sake of using technology. And as Mr. Pizzano mentioned, we do believe that, you know, part of the, our goal was to get rid of the computer labs, so we'd have that space to use for other things, whether that's full-day kindergarten or something else. And we think that we would, we really would like to do that in the near future, and that we do think we can reallocate those items that we use for technology. We have Chromebook carts, we have some other mobile technology. We would still have technology integration specialists, we would still have technology class for students, but it would, it would look different, and it would be more integrated. So, that's exciting. So, our third goal was about fostering the use of diverse assessment methods to inform instruction and provide students with multiple means for expressing what they have learned, and teachers with information that they need to provide targeted instruction. So, the big picture, or kind of why we're doing this, is, you know, we have state testing, we have our PARC, as we just talked about, and this system of accountability is legislated. But our goal is to help children at all levels to achieve. And yes, we want them to do well on our state and national accountability measures, but our bigger aim is that we want them to do well in the day-to-day. We want our teachers to be able to know where students are at more readily, not just what they did on one large exam. So, there are many things in place in the district. We do have testing that we do periodically, and probes and whatnot, but we want to do more than that, and we want it to be diverse. Our diversity is more the norm than the exception, so we, we want students to be able to express themselves in different ways. We try to use video as presentation, we try to use multiple modes of representation when we're teaching. We also want students to be able to... We also want students to be able to demonstrate to us what they know in diverse ways. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sylvester to say a little bit more about that.
Hello? We had a program which was initiated by the district about three years ago for universal design, design learning. And it encompassed, uh, this tool, uh, which we're, we're kind of bringing back into kind of play this year, particularly with our PBIS program and, and giving teachers a resource, uh, to reach students and be flexible with their lessons and be flexible within their teaching. And this one tool is kind of the best practices, all on one tool at hand's reach. And so when they're working with students, uh, within their classroom or within, uh, creating a lesson and how to make a lesson that's going to address students with all different abilities and how to adjust that lesson, this tool, which we'll bring back as a part of PBS, will be utilized and we're going to give it to each of our teachers. We have some for you that you can look at as well. But it's a very hands-on, it's a very fine print. It's a little difficult to, to look at, kind of, but it, and it does have a lot to it. But it just really gives the teacher, uh, and the ability to just pan through and look at a student who is more of a visual learner, how do we address that? A student who is more of a, a, a physical learner, how do we address that? And gives them a bunch of different quick, chew, chew, chew bullets that they can work on with their students.
Thank you. So this is happening in different places in the building and different teachers have, uh, varying levels of, of comfort with it. So what we hope to do is do a lot of professional sharing so that practices can, can spread. Also, this tool is really neat for a quick, hands-on, but there's a lot of online resources that, um, this CAST UDL website has as well. So teachers can go there. You can plug in your, your unit, uh, title and oftentimes resources will pop right up that are already created that teachers can, can utilize. So sometimes we just need extra time. So using our staff meeting times or in-service times for teachers to explore these sites are, are part of our upcoming goals. And I think, um, Mr. Pizzano had something to add about a recent project that one of his, his children completed.
Relate a story that really exemplifies how, you know, you know, the example of how, uh, students learn differently and, uh, you have different ways in which they can best, uh, express what they've, uh, learned. I've, I've watched my son do all these various, uh, class projects, you know, over the years. It's become more and more, uh, this year, in, uh, fourth grade, the students of his class were asked to, uh, uh, research any topic of their choice as part of, um, studying the history and culture of the Southeastern United States and then present that, uh, research in any format they wanted to, literally any format. The formats range from, uh, slideshows to posters to skits. One child did a mock tourism brochure. My son chose to do, um, a puppet show. You know, on the surface, this concept of puppet show sounded absolutely ridiculous to me. But, you know, all of us have advocates and it's something to support their crazy ideas despite what you, you know, despite your own opinions. However, in seeing the amount of, uh, research that my son invested in this topic and the seriousness with which he took the research and then the time he spent, you know, rehearsing it, it was, it became so obvious that, you know, the format was, you know, secondary. What mattered was how excited it was to research, you know, a topic, you know, that he wanted to do because he wanted to have the greatest puppet show that had ever been done on the Seminole Indians. You know, that, and I'm happy to say, you know, despite my apprehensions, you know, his teacher reports it was, it was a big hit, it achieved the goal. And I think it's just such a great example of how effectively, um, you know, diverse assessment methods can be used to educate and evaluate, uh, children.
Thank you. And our, our final goal is about outdoor learning and stewardship to the community. So I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Sylvester, who's been doing a lot of work on our outdoor learning initiative.
I had, uh, been over in Yonbrook for several years and we've worked on an outdoor classroom, uh, setting and refurbished those fields over there as well. So that was, uh, becoming my MO, I think, and within, within the buildings that I visit throughout my career. So this is a, uh, federal furnace, uh, community project flyer that I have and I'll give this, one of these to each one of you as well. And what it does is it outlines the phases of the project that we have set up. Uh, our community, um, project committee will be meeting actually this Wednesday at six o'clock at our school. And we'll be discussing the next phase. Uh, last year, our first phase was to, uh, install, um, wood chips into the playground area, making it a safer space, um, doing an overall cleanup around that area, around the play area because of the building project that preceded. Just needed a little bit of sprucing up and still has a ways to go, but we're working on it. It is, um, one of the many phases. We have about, we have eight phases or six phases, uh, in our, within our projects. And they range anywhere from community gardens, uh, planting gardens where the students would actually be installing plants, uh, growing plants from seedlings and putting them in and, um, regrouping the seeds and selling them or, or selling the, um, fruits or using them, uh, within the school, um, food if that possible. And then there would be other aspects, which would be an outdoor classroom where the students would be able to go and utilize a number of different stations around, whether it's an outdoor dry erase board, whether it's a tree where they can age it, based on the rings or create a sundial based on a human sundial, positioning, um, blocks on the ground where they'd stand on them. There are a number of different brainstorming ideas that we can, uh, install for that outdoor classroom area. Another phase would be, uh, to install some shade trees and a shade structure out in our play area. It's pretty wide open. Uh, they took out a lot of trees for the, for the project so that they can bring machinery in. So we're going to, um, install some planting areas for trees, for shade, uh, but local trees, something that we, where we work hard to, um, have our students understand that we live in a pine barren and how important that is to understand what a pine barren is. And, and, uh, that's a, a part of, of the learning that comes out of all of these projects that the parents that come to these meetings put into it is that, uh, a small group of people can do a large project. And, uh, it sends a message to our students how important, uh, outdoor education is and how important their environment is to their education. It advances their skills in a number of different ways. So many I can't even imagine, begin to, to explain all of them to you. But, uh, it is an important part of, um, our pro, our project. And it is a phase, there are six phases to it, but this could go six years. It could go longer. Uh, it just depends on what resources we get. A lot of, all of the resources that we get for these projects are donated from numerous, um, organizations. A lot of parents have businesses that have, they've donated, uh, funds for the PTA, donated money for the wood chips last year. Parents donated trucks to move the wood chips last year and parents and children came out and actually spread the wood chips around. So those are the kinds of projects and that's how each of the phases will go over the next several years.
Thank you very much. I think that was a wonderful explanation of that goal and where we are at. I think that's it for our presentation and our update for our four goals. Does anyone have any questions for us?
Questions, comments? Very good. Thank you. Very informative.
Thank you very much.
Now, I'd like to make a logistics suggestion here that, um, we go a little out of order and we move the trips up. Say I'm pandering to the audience. Michelle, can you give me a motion to move it out of order?
I moved it. Field trip request. It's, uh, eight point one to.
Section eight in front of section seven. Okay. Mrs. Burgess, second it. All those in favor? Anomalous. Fire away.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kristin McGirl. I am the advisor at Plymouth North for the Student Council Executive Board as well as a health educator. Uh, my students and myself are here tonight, um, to ask your guys permission, um, to attend an overnight conference in Hyannis. I know that South is attending it and we have in the past. We just haven't in a very long time. So I'm going to let my students introduce themselves and kind of tell you about their trip.
My name's Mark. My name's Margaret Duncan and I'm the Student Council Executive Board President.
My name's Brandon Valerie and I'm the Student Council Executive Board Vice President.
My name's Molly McKenna and I'm the Student Council Executive Board Class Liaison.
My name's Cam McCormick and I'm the School Council Executive Board Historian.
So the four of us will be attending the trip if it gets approved, along with a freshman class vice president. And we would really like to attend this conference. We haven't attended in several years because most executive board members attend the DECA conference, which aligns with the Hyannis conference. So we didn't really have enough people to go, but this year we found enough members and we would really like to attend. We will be spending the days interacting with peers from across the state, presenting and attending leadership workshops where we hope to gain valuable information that we will be able to bring back to North and become the best possible leaders we can for the school. And it's really just a great way for us to stay connected to the state council. And we have figured out financially, student council will give each of us a hundred dollars to attend, so it'll help lower the financial costs and we all feel we can attend this reasonably.
Add or? Then I would ask for a motion. Ms. Hahn?
I've moved that the proposed Plymouth North High School overnight field trip to the MASC State Conference in Hyannis, Mass. Be accepted and approved as presented.
Seconded by Ms. Badger. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anomalous.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry I didn't really notice yous before, or I would have moved you up before the other one. Sorry about that. Next one is the Washington DC, your, your, your trip.
Overnight field trip is, um, I was looking at it, says, what Washington DC trip do we have? Well, this, um, this is the, um, the, um, the dream ride and we will be looking at taking, um, about, uh, six students. That will be, uh, students that will have graduated the Saturday before, so they will be done with their course of studies. And this will be, uh, to travel to and from Washington. Um, there, there will be no cost associated, uh, to the individuals. It would be subsidized by sponsorship. So the students would, um, would be, uh, serving in the role of media. And, uh, we'll have one student that will be a mechanic, uh, who, uh, will be repairing bikes and things of that nature along the way. We did it similar, um, to this model the first time we did it. The request tonight is coming before the committee in order to allow these students to be in the umbrella of support from the district insurance, coverage, um, things along that way. So it would be an, uh, an official, um, event similar to the first time that we went on the trip. And I will tell you that we went through this process this, the first time. So, um, we feel comfortable that these students have, uh, will be prepared to, to endure the challenges ahead. And they have demonstrated before that they, they will, uh, do a fine job. So, uh, I bring this to you tonight for your approval.
You'll move it? Mrs. Burgess moves it. Do we have a second? Ms. Badger seconds it. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor? Anomalous.
Thank you.
Policy adoption amendment review.
Go back up to the preschool.
Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry.
Sorry. She put so much time and effort into that report. Sorry about that. Okay, we'll go back up to the developmental preschool proposal.
Yes, tonight we have a, um, proposal that we want to bring to, uh, the committee. We have Stacy Rogers, our Director of Special Education, and Mary Mello, our, uh, preschool director, to discuss options that we are, um, proposing regarding our preschool program. I think many of you are aware of, uh, the limitations that our preschool program, um, is involved with. We had an opportunity about a month ago to be the guests of Ms. Mello over at the preschool. We did a tour. And to be quite honest with you, I think, uh, the building and the staff, the way it's outfitted, they have done a remarkable job over the years to be able to address our population of students. And every time I'm in that building, it is a, um, very vibrant, energetic and very child-centered environment. So I think, um, tonight's proposal is really not to take a look at the past, but to look at the future. And we do, for the general public, uh, knowledge, we do have preschool programs at, uh, West Elementary, uh, at South Elementary and at Mount Pleasant. Tonight's proposal is, uh, taking a look at how can we, uh, provide a program that has, uh, growth potential, has opportunities to address some of the limitations of, uh, the current Mount Pleasant building and also to, uh, look at combining resources in one logistic-centered location. So tonight we, um, have a presentation for you that would encapsulate and inform the committee right now regarding a possible decision on actually moving, um, the, the existing programs across the district to one centralized location. With that said, I will turn it over to Mary or Stacy. I'm looking at both of them and we'll see who, uh, jumps to the microphone first.
Thank you. Does this one work?
Yeah, that'll work.
All right, thank you. We, we've spoken before and, um, the, the focus of, you know, seems like the state and the federal government, you know, more and more is getting to be more towards, you know, early education. You know, and the research is very clear, for every dollar you invest in early education, um, you save nine dollars down the road. You know, and the cost not, is not only in academics, uh, in academic performance, but it's also in, um, you know, just, just human potential and, um, you know, contributing to society in later years, you know, as a, um, as, as a full member of society, you know, working and contributing and contributing to the tax base and the community. And the research is, is very, very clear that this early start, you know, really pays off in the long run. We've been having so many, um, so many challenges in the past few years, which has been interesting because when we put our heads together, it's amazing what the staff and I have been able to, to do just to expand our program within the confines of, of that little building with six classrooms. But it's coming to the point that, you know, we have so many children, um, in Plymouth that really need services and we would like to be able to expand our programs even more as, um, the potential for, um, additional state and federal funding comes down the pike. And that's, you know, one of the main reasons, um, you know, for this proposal, to move to a, um, you know, larger site to allow us, uh, you know, to expand our program. And also, you know, a lot of us are travel, spend a lot of time traveling all around Plymouth, you know, to the different programs. I spent so much time at South Elementary today. Um, we have therapists traveling all over town, uh, which is really, um, not a very, uh, you know, efficient use, you know, of our therapist's time. And if we can have everybody in one place, we can combine all of our resources and it will give me a lot more flexibility when setting up our class list. We'll have a little bit more of a homogeneous, um, uh, you know, classrooms once I have, you know, the opportunity to have everyone in one place. You know, therefore, we've made this proposal to move to, um, you know, PCIS. We, we've looked at just about everything we can think of and, you know, we've been problem solving. You know, it, it isn't perfect. You know, the first year, we're going, um, you know, we're going to have to make some changes primarily to the plumbing, um, because the state has very, very clear health and, um, safety standards for young children. So we do need to, um, repurpose some of the bathrooms and add additional sinks. Some of the health standards say that the children need to be washing their hands first thing when they come in the building and then periodically during the day. So we need additional sinks in order for 200 little kids to wash their hands three and four times a day. You know, the other thing that we need to do is, you know, just for the safety of all, we really need our own, um, security entrance and key card entrance just for preschool. We have a lot of parents who bring their children, um, you know, to the preschool for speech only or occupational therapy only. And it would be so much more efficient if they could just come in. you know, to the preschool for speech only or occupational therapy only. And it would be so much more efficient if they could just come into that wing rather than having to travel all the way through the, you know, middle school, you know, just for services with their children. The other concern that we have, you know, is for playground. You know, that's something that's really gonna take, you know, a lot of work with the staff to try and research it. You know, there are a number of grant opportunities that we've already found. And the staff is getting pretty excited about Nature's Classroom. That's gonna be one of our goals next year. But in the meantime, in order to meet the state's standards for gross motor skills, there are some rooms at the middle school that have a divider in between. And we thought if we opened up that divider and put two rooms together, we could have a very, very large indoor gym motor room. And so, the other expense would be to buy some additional indoor equipment for gross motor equipment. And then we would be able to meet those standards for the first year until we can get an outdoor playground, you know, up and running.
A little bit of background on why PCIS. PCIS is just finished last year their phasing out of redistricting. And I think some of us remember that we redistricted the middle and high schools about four or five years ago to be able to repopulate the students going to Plymouth North and South with with new Plymouth North opening. So, what we did is we allowed the students that were at PCIS in that one house that we are looking at occupying. We allowed those students to stay in that house until they graduated out of eighth grade and onto the high school. So, what has happened over that time, last year we realized that that house, and we knew this was gonna happen, that we would have a house that would be available. Of course, Principal Palladino and the staff at PCIS have used that space wisely. They've run some classes in there. They've run world language, team meetings and things of that nature in that part of the building. But through the support of Principal Palladino and his staff, we're we were proposing to take Plymouth Family Network, which is based at PCIS already. And the Plymouth Family Network is a grant-run program that runs in the core of the building at PCIS. Parents come and go in that building currently. And it is, the Plymouth Family Network is a program that is really designed to support early childhood education programs for our potential students, family members. Classes take place, supports go out to homes. What we are looking at doing is repurposing that house and moving the program at West Elementary, South Elementary, and Mount Pleasant into one house. Now, what would change? We would occupy, we would free up some space at West Elementary and South Elementary. We would free up the building at Mount Pleasant. So, that's something that we'd have to discuss at another meeting. And then we would have to take a look at making slight modifications to the sink area, which would be outside the common bathrooms, and look at a security entrance. So, that would be the model. We we have looked at the budget to be able to do this. And we believe it's around fifty thousand dollars to be able to make those modifications, keeping in mind that all those modifications would be done with our own internal maintenance department. Our plumbers, internal plumber, would actually do the plumbing for that program to make sure that we could have the adequacy of sinks needed for the program. Mr. Costin is looking at numbers right now to look at how we could make this work by freezing budgets in certain areas and trying to actually fund this program partially with this year's budget and potentially looking at how we could do this throughout the summer if it's the committed desire to move this forward for the beginning of next school year. This is a program that Director Mello and Director Rogers have come before us at my office and before school committee talking about the limits of the preschool program because the need is is greater than the the space allocation that we do have. There is great efficiencies to having our professional staff and support staff in one central location opposed to be traveling all over the community trying to service our our students. So, we have worked with Principal Palladino and his staff, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Costin, Arthur Montron, Stacy and Mary. We've been in and out of PCIS. We've looked at it. We've measured it. And I think we've made Principal Palladino a little bit nervous. But we have looked at it. It is a proposal to, and and it's in front of you tonight because we believe it's a it's a sound decision for the short term of the preschool program. And I say short term because I do believe, not in the next five years, but in in the future, when the middle school population does increase, we will be looking for another location for the preschool program. Keep in mind that Mount Mount Pleasant is a fantastic building. I think our maintenance crew and Principal, Director Mello have done a wonderful job keeping that building and keeping keeping it in a position where we can service kids. It's a it's a difficult building to navigate for the population of children. They've done a marvelous job doing it. We believe that PCIS being on one floor, having access to a nurse, having access to restrooms, having access to actually feeding these children, that has been difficult in the past. I think it will make it a nice and integrated program. We've also discussed having the possibility of having middle school students being mentors and coming down and working with the children. But anyway, I know I could talk on and on, but I will turn it back to Mary and Stacy for other comments.
So, open to any questions that you might have?
Just a couple of things. I follow your your thinking about Mount Pleasant. It is a beautiful building and it has a great history and, but the ambulatory needs of these particular students is becoming greater and greater as time goes on. And Mount Pleasant cannot accommodate those students with real ambulatory needs. So, the one floor is really necessary. And if we don't do it this year, it'll be it'll be mandated upon us in not too many years down the road. So, that's one thing I want to say. The utility of service, we've talked about this before. It makes a lot of sense to bring people to one site rather than have them drive back and forth across the town to a number of sites. So, that makes a lot of sense. I think that the idea of the indoor gym, it's a fantastic idea till the playground comes along. That's a really good thing. The one thing that I am concerned about though, and and I and I understand your request that parents who come and go need to be able to come and go. However, this will have to discuss this because the we, the chain is only as strong as its weakest link. And right now, PCIS is very well regulated in terms of security. People come in the front door and leave the front door. And that's the way it should be. Unfortunately, this is the society we live in. So, I'm a little concerned about allowing another entrance and exit without, at the end of that house, some way to prevent people from getting deeper into the building. So, it's a great request, but I think we're gonna have to discuss that part. But other than that, I think this is a really great request.
Does that affect what they're doing now as far as the collaborative or the, no Plymouth Family Network? Would that cool? You know, what you're saying?
Yeah, so right now-
Do they come in the front?
Yep, Plymouth Family Network accesses the building through the through the main entrance. We've looked at it a couple of different ways as far as having the parents come through the front door. And again, having different, having, I should've included a map in the presentation, so I apologize that you don't have a visual, but the Apollo House really can be completely almost isolated from the rest of the building, the way that PCIS is laid out. We've looked at and we've spoken with Alan McLean and the people who coordinate the security system. We would, Mary already has the staffing in her building as a security receptionist, and that person would come over and basically serve that function as far as having a video camera and having key access in and out of that Apollo wing so that the parents wouldn't have to go through the entire building. That would also allow PFN parents and their students to access the program through that side door as well.
Yes, we, you know, at Mount Pleasant, we follow the same system that everyone in the district does. We have the Raptor system where every visitor, you know, has to present, you know, their license. It has to be run through. And so, we have a history of every person who is in the building at any one time. I think that the piece that we need to discuss with Alan McLean and Brian is is that maybe if those two systems can talk to each other, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we all, we do have a record of exactly who is in the building at all times. The the entrance between, you know, the proposed early childhood center and the middle school, you know, the doors will be closed, but, you know, we can't, they can't be locked because of fire code. And that's something we haven't talked about. It's in an area that won't have a lot of traffic and it's gonna be right next to the main entrance. So, I think anyone that tends to go towards that that door, you know, it will be noticeable. But I think that's that's a good point. That's something that we're gonna have to, you know, set up and discuss.
Yep. Dr. Maestis?
To address your point, Dr. Sorensen, I think what we would do if the school committee does wish to move forward and approve this, what we would do is bring forward to the committee an update as to how the operations of the building would would work so that you can get a sense. And I would also suggest that we have our safety committee and our and our safety group review the process to make sure that there are fail-safe opportunities built into whatever is developed on that wing. I know they 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 will want to walk over, review it, and look at our protocols to make sure that there is a system in place so that we can respond to situations. But to your point, Dr. Sorensen, I think we've started down a road of school security. We should continue down that road.
So, the, just walk through the timeline again for me because we really already accepted this proposal at our retreat, as you know. So, what tonight was just to get the logistics of, you know, and you you did that in your report, just breaking everything out for us. So, the most important thing is the cost associated with moving the program will be paid for by grants revolving accounts in our local budget already allocated for preschool and special education. So, it's important to stress that we're not asking for anything additional for this. We're just gonna reallocate and move things around.
Yep. And it would be straddled, because we're doing it at the end of the year, it would be straddled across two fiscal years. So, we would be able to use FY sixteen and FY seventeen money to to account for the funds that we would need in order to provide the item.
Set the program up.
Yep.
So, it's August.
So, we had to actually talk with Gary Costin about whether or not it made sense to start to move the program earlier in the summer or later, whether or not it would be a cost savings to do it all at one time. And I believe the movers had said that it would be easier for them just to pick a date and do it in one move versus trying to split it up. We had talked about moving some of the programming at the end of June when school got out and then moving some of the programming closer to the start of the school year to give the teachers more time. As a cost-saving measure, we felt as though it would be better to just do it all at one one point in time, which would be at the end of our summer programming. So, the students would finish their summer program. We would pick a date with the movers and they would all have that moved. And then we would spend, you know, we could, we'd be able to pay the teachers to come in and help set up their classrooms. And we can, you know, Mary and I talked about, you know, offering pizza and things like that for people to come and help. People are very excited about it. There's a lot of potential with the with the new space. And we would shoot for our opening with the start of the school year. The preschool actually starts a little bit later than our typical kiddos. So, we have a little bit of time at the beginning of September as well, when the teachers are due back, but we don't have students.
Okay. So, more question to maybe Dr. Campbell, or is this gonna give enough time for West and South Elementary? It's, in other words, August fifteenth to nineteenth, if we do the moving, then, is that giving them enough time to reallocate the space that's
Yes.
they're gonna have? Like the tour we went on tonight, we have a classroom that would be empty.
We're talking a few classrooms between the two schools, so that would be more.
And it'll it'll play right into the full-day kindergarten plans?
Correct.
And that'll give them enough time?
Yes.
Good. Good. So, September will be the open house for that.
So, to piggyback on what you said with the full-day kindergarten, part of this would be to leverage those three classroom spaces in those classrooms as well if the full-day kindergarten passes. Even if the full-day kindergarten doesn't pass in the in the town, it would allow us three more additional classroom spaces to offer full-day kindergarten for more students in the town.
For the tuition-based, if that's what we're stuck with?
Right.
Perfect. Any further questions? Then can I have a motion? Dr. Soren? And Mr. Morgan seconded it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Mr. Begley, if I may?
Yes.
We will provide the committee with an update throughout the summer as to how things are going. And then when it's all complete, before students, I'd love to have you all come and and walk through the program before kids enter the doors. I think it'd be a nice, not necessarily a ribbon cutting, but it'll be some, a housewarming. Yes, very well said. Well said.
Thank you. Thank you. I heard the "don't forget" in my ear. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
That's good.
Through with it, I guess?
No, uh, no.
Okay.
She's never, she said she's never had any, it wasn't her, that, that name was mistaken. No, I know.
Okay.
So you just checked on?
I can, yeah, we can talk about that.
There were a few where, we've mentioned this before, there, there were a few, it seems like they're gonna always be there. Some, like, uh, the banned ones, for example, seem to be whatever they gross, that's, that's what they net also. The number almost, always seems to be the same.
Yeah, 'cause typically that's-
If there's no overhead, that's good.
That's really good. And then there are other ones where they gross six thousand dollars and they only walk away with twelve hundred.
Yeah, and, you know, we, I guess the way that I've approached it, in terms of my role in this, is to approve the appropriateness of the activity with the hope that the individuals that are going through, the labor that they're going through, realize the return in investment that they get.
Right, the effort they're putting in.
And some of them do, and you'll see that certain fundraisers over time are very popular and, um, and some of them are done because the community likes it, the organization likes it, and they may not be a big moneymaker, but they enjoy it. So, I try not to get involved, or I haven't, I should say, in the past, gone involved in making recommendations in, in terms of whether or not it's the best return in investment for them, as much as the nature of the activity that the students would be partaking in.
Maybe we would want to, since, since you've been collecting the information for a while now, um, maybe we would want to put some sort of a summary together of, um, at least large categories of fundraisers, and you could tell them at the beginning of the year, historically, you know, effort versus what you're gonna actually net on the thing.
In terms of what?
Rather than showing them, they might get lost in the full spreadsheet, but if, but if you only had five or six major types of categories, you know, like, uh, candle sales, you know, versus, uh, candy bars, you know, one huge return, whatever you gross, you're very close to netting, other, huge effort, big sales effort, um, but you're not, you're not keeping the money. I mean, it just doesn't seem to make-
And I agree with you. I, I mean, when I was a PTO president, we had like a, we tried to do a fifty-fifty, but not a lot of companies do that anymore, so like a sixty-forty. But some of them, in their defense, might be more of a, not so much a fundraiser as like a spirit wear or promotional thing, where you don't, you purposely don't make a lot of money on it, 'cause you don't wanna charge the customers too much. So, there are situations where that, I think that's more acceptable.
It's more getting the word out.
Yeah, so you might, it might be more of a, um, spirit wear, or, right, like you said, just to promote, or just to do something nice for the kids, that doesn't, isn't really a profitable thing. That, that could happen as well, I think.
Yeah, I can tell you, as a, as a former principal who had worked with my PTO, the PTO would make those decisions, and when they, excuse me, and when they would meet as a board, they'd be looking at those and, and saying, "Well, this is a very worthwhile, you know, endeavor. We should go down this road, or we shouldn't go down this road." So, with those groups, I, you know, my impression is that that's been, that's taking place at the PTO level. In terms of our internal groups having conversations with those people, it's certainly something that we could discuss as well.
Yeah, it just seems it might stop some-
Yeah, when you see, if it's not-
And reach out the energy.
Correct. As, as Ms. Hunt said, there are some that are more cultural, spirit, um, spirit-like activities that are sort of feel-good experiences, and, and they might bring in some money, while some are deliberate fundraising activities, and, um, I would hope that, that the individuals doing it would realize, um, and we can help them with that, in terms of those that are, you know, a lot of labor, but not much return in investment, as we said.
Okay. Yes?
I just have one really quick, um, thing, that I was looking through this, um, the other, yesterday, and I just happened to see, so, so for example, on page twelve, if you go to twelve and you go down to, oh, I just lost page twelve, um, down to the fifth one, and it says Foreign Candy Company, there's a couple that are like that. So, we're, I'm, I'm assuming that Foreign Candy Company is not the sponsor, uh, and that it's, uh, PTA, it's a PTA for PCIS. Uh, and then there's like Hiller's Chocolate at the bottom is the same way, and there's a handful of them. So, just making sure that we have our sponsors and everything in mind.
Yes.
There, there were a few there that had me concerned.
It was like, I don't know where this is going and who's getting the money.
And there were several for the, um-
That's for the Medu trip, yeah.
The French trip?
The French, yes.
There were, there were two canceled things, but their trip's in April, so... Are they gonna be on target for their fundraising? 'Cause they have two canceled events in here. But, it, it, it's out of context, that question. It's not fair.
No, but it's true.
But it, it's, it's, it's just, uh, it jumped out at me, that their, their trip is in April, but they've had two significant fundraisers that they canceled.
That was the, the dance, yeah, the north was one, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about fundraising? Then, uh, reports and proposals from committee members? Anybody have anything wanna share?
Usual, oh, sorry.
No, you can go first.
No, that's all right. Mr. Morgan actually had his hand up first and-
I shared the same thing as, as Ms. Hunt, but both of us were judges at the, um, science fair at Plymouth High School. And, uh, it was an honor to do it, and, um, it's amazing, the, uh, ingenuity of these, um, students, and the work and research they put into it, and, uh, um, some very impressive projects, and, um, I know that I'm looking forward to hopefully being invited to do it next year.
I wasn't able to make it at the last minute. I don't like it when the real world interferes with my volunteer.
I know, that's what my head, that's what I have.
Um, so, did you guys, that was all, all the same thing, all the science fair?
I have something else.
You have something else, so then?
Yep.
Oh, my thing just changed though. Hold on, my notes just changed. So, the distinguished visitors committee met last week, um, and we're starting to talk about this summer's trip to, um, from Shishikahama to Plymouth. Um, I have put an email out to all of the students that went, I did it this afternoon, that went to Japan, asking if they would be willing to host. Um, I got one yes and one maybe, and I know that I'm willing to host as well. So, uh, it looks like it's probably gonna be eight to nine students coming. The new mayor actually has been to Plymouth twice as a selectman. So, whether or not he's actually gonna come is still undecided. If he doesn't come, the vice mayor comes, so it will be an actual official delegation. Um, we, they're, they're still looking at the first week in August, last week in July. One of the problems is those flights are very, very expensive right now, and they're not able to get a direct flight. So, they are, they're very concerned about getting here late at night, and they were thinking about getting a hotel room in Boston. I said no, I said it's way too expensive, and that we'd be more than happy to meet you and pick you up, you know, whenever you come in. Um, one thing that the DBC wants, and I'm hoping maybe Mrs. Burgess can help me too, is they want a list of all of the questions and the criteria. They wanna have some kind of a protocol for the future, um, and they wanna just make a book and have it ready. Um, because in the past, even though it hasn't been an actual school trip, the school had certain responsibilities, um, but it's still considered a town trip, so they wanna, you know, have all of that information on hand, um, at any time. The, um, other thing is, uh, I think about a year ago, the selectmen voted to up the contribution from the three organizations, and this year, each organization gave the old amount, so we might be hearing about that. Um, I believe it was, um, it was originally five thousand dollars for e, all three. Well, they, the selectmen voted like over a year ago to up it to seventy-five hundred. I know. So, that, they're looking into exactly where those notes are, because all three groups already gave their contribution, and they all gave the old amount. So, there was some kind of a miscommunication there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I never heard of the seventy.
I did.
You did?
Yeah, but I don't know, like, I don't have the official, so that's, that, you might hear more about that.
We would've had to have voted on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
I don't recall voting on that.
I think the selectmen voted on it, but I'm not sure exactly.
But they can't, they can't, they can't vote to raise our contributions.
They're gonna get the, the details of the agreement and back to us, 'cause I told them the same thing. I said, "Well, you know, good luck."
Sounds like we would've had to have voted on that.
Exactly. Um, so I think that's, that's pretty much where we stand right now. Um, we're also gonna start looking at the itinerary. We know that that's a really hard job. Um, there is a Japanese exhibit in Falmouth that's going on, or that's gonna be going on this summer, and apparently it's a, a very sought-after, um, art exhibit that people, even in Japan, will travel quite a ways to see, and it's here, and it's in Falmouth, so they're gonna try and work a trip there to it, you know, with our, our delegation as well, and we're just gonna start getting the ball rolling.
Very good.
Um, and then, other than that, we did meet as an advocacy group, but I think you're gonna talk about that, aren't you?
No.
Okay, and then, we had our advocacy, 'cause, subcommittee meeting as well. That's it.
That's it. Ms. Badger?
I just wanna say, we have our next Alumni Association meeting on March thirty-first at six o'clock at the, um, Remax in Bennie's. We're reorganizing, we're trying to get more people engaged, so come to our meeting, fill our room. We're not done yet.
How are we doing? Are the numbers going up?
Depends on what you mean by numbers going up.
Okay. All right. We're not ready to answer that question yet.
We have consistency.
We still-
That's good.
We still find there's a lot of people that don't really know about it yet. So, I talk to people all the time, and I ask them if they've gone on to the alumni website and registered, and they haven't. So, I think we just need to continue to get the word out that they can do that.
And we're working on some projects right now that we hope will show that we can actually do things, and that we are an actual group, and that maybe you'll get us some more buy-in, if we can say, "Look at us, look at us over here, we've done this, now fund us." Or, "We need to do this, we need you to join us."
Like the education foundation?
Exactly.
Having events or something.
Yep, not an event, not quite yet. We're not event-ready.
Okay. Then we had, we attached the minutes and everything from the PYDC reports. Uh, Dr. Miestis, did you want to comment on it? There's a lot of information in there.
I actually was not at the last meeting, so I'll have to defer to Dr. Campbell.
No, I, I don't think the minutes are from the last meeting.
Oh, the, let me pull up those-
The one prior to.
Okay, I can- I moved off to another agenda, so hold on one second.
Well, that's all right. If you didn't have anything you wanted to add to it, that was fine, but if you, if you got a chance to take a look at it, you see there's a lot of activity for the anti-drug abuse efforts. It's a, it's a very active group. Okay. Building Committee.
Yep. Uh, we met, uh, on Thursday, February eleventh, uh, at Town Hall. Uh, on the agenda first was the Plymouth South High School with the extended building committee, and, uh, we were mostly talking about, um, what the building looked like now, 'cause, and we had also had, you know, surprises that, you, you went up to the third floor when we had our thing, yeah, that you could even go up into the third floor now, even though it's a structure. It just seems kinda strange that, that it's doable. But it's coming along very well, and, uh, and we're having the topping-off ceremony tomorrow morning at eleven o'clock, so, uh, if anybody wishes to come to, to that. And, uh, we'll go at ten-thirty. We are signing the beam that I, it's gonna be put in. Um, there is a tour, I think, too, for some, in the morning, for some, before, prior to that, still.
A tour of the construction?
Yeah. I saw, well, I saw a notice that went out to the building committee, that if they were in the tour, to be at Plymouth South Middle at nine o'clock, and they'd be going over. I, it was on my email.
That was for the retreat.
No, 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 since then. For the building committee.
If there's no tour tomorrow.
There is no tour. Okay, all right.
I wouldn't think we would wanna tour, yeah.
All right.
It was very much a construction site.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then, um, the next, uh, one was the Sims House, and, um, that's an ongoing project about what they're going to do, and how much they can do, and the money that's allotted to them. So, they're still working on that. Uh, Newtown Hall, they did a project status. They do meet every Tuesday, um, in the morning at the, at the trailer, and, um, the things that have gone through, through the time of our meeting was that the eighteen-twenty, uh, interior demo progressed, and the stair dismantling is complete for the, for the marble, that beautiful marble staircase. And they've completed the temporary electrical in that building. The drainage structure and infiltration systems have been installed and continue to be installed, actually. Uh, both the, the eighteen-twenty building, the DPW and Burial Hill parking areas. The sheeting installation is completed, and the, uh, incriminators are installed, the whaler installation is started, and the monitoring is ongoing. And the granite, the granite that was out back, there was additional granite that, pieces that were recovered, but, um, they've been uncovered now and removed. So, the ones that are there, I think are the ones that, um, they're planning to use on the project itself. Um, going forward, they're gonna, uh, in February, they're gonna complete the, the waller installation and tieback installation. Uh, they're doing incrimo- monitoring, I have no idea what incrimo is. The wire removal in the parking area, uh, continue with the site preparation. And I have pictures here of all the site work and the budget, and see, this is all, if anybody wants to look at it, I have it. And, um, they're gonna continue with the eighteen-twenty interior demolition activities. So, uh, it's moving, it's moving along, finally. Good, it's good that it's going, and it's good that we had a light winter, so that they could continue to do that. Other project updates, the salt shed had no progress on it. North Plymouth Fire Station, they're looking at two properties, and, um, one is the Scazi property on Hedge Road, and the other one is, uh, I don't know what you call it for a property, but it's twenty-five North Spooner, which is the old Tedeschi, then Stop and Shop, then whatever area, but it's over by the laundromat area. They need two acres. The fire department needs two acres. So, those are being looked at. Um, the White House Beach restroom, the septic has been approved. Uh, input administration building, uh, the design process is to begin in March, and there's nothing on the parking garage. So, that's what I have, and, um, wait a minute. Dr. Sorenson, if you have something, please, to add.
Just a couple additions to the, to the South High School project.
Yes.
At this point, the project is fifteen percent complete. We spent approximately fourteen million dollars of the budget so far. Uh, an interesting event has occurred regarding the turf field, the football turf field, and that is, the manufacturer, uh, has to either dismantle or reinstall certain pieces of equipment to build the turf that we need, and has made an offer to the, to the district, or to the building committee. It'll cost them money to take down their machinery and put in the machinery for the turf that we want, so their recommendation is, they will give us a much higher quality turf, uh, for, uh, approximately twenty-five thousand dollars more. Now, this is an alternate, it's on our alternate list, but the builder committee felt that the quality between what we're buying and what they're offering is a, is a sale. And so, the committee voted in favor to, uh, to go to the, uh, higher-quality turf, uh, as an alternate. The other piece of information regards the lighting and the turf on the baseball fields. This also is an alternate. Uh, we won't know for about ten months whether or not we'll actually be able to get that alternate into the budget, because as we spend the money, we'll know what we have left, as we know from, from north. Uh, however, the, uh, the contractor is putting in conduit to the baseball fields, in the event that we don't get the lighting alternate into the project. The conduit will be in place, so if, uh, there was a benefactor or some other way to buy lights, at least the, uh, the infrastructure would be there.
Now, what about, um, I thought you were gonna touch on Town Hall, though. Uh, Lincoln Street.
Oh, Lincoln's.
And our intentions for-
Oh, they were asking about it, yes.
Well, there was a discussion at the building committee, uh, there was a discussion with the building committee about, again, uh, the school departments. This has come up several times now. This is probably the fourth or fifth time I've brought it up at this committee meeting.
And we voted on it, at least twice.
We voted on it. Uh, the, the, the town side is asking questions about, um, is there going to be an expense from the school department in terms of, the building committee's asking this question, because is there gonna be construction involved, or destruction of what's, is currently at Town Hall? Uh, and the building committee was asking if there's gonna be expense to that. And that question has not been discussed yet, at any level that I know of. The other question that was asked was, um, what are we leaving? If we were to leave the South Meadow Road building, what condition are we leaving it in? What are we gonna leave there? Because that, that the town, I'm thinking, is hoping to sell that building, and wanna know the condition we're gonna leave it. And the third was the reminder to us, through the building committee, that town is maintaining, uh, archives in the basement, which we knew, and the town also wants mutual use of the big conference room, which we knew as well.
Right. So, we had already agreed to those.
Right.
But this, they still feel insecure about whether we're really gonna move there, and I don't know how you get the message out that we really want to move there, but we do.
Too bad that Rich left, but, um, I think we need another vote to clearly state that we still are interested in that site, and that we should be included in any analysis that's done of the site, and any alterations. Um, Dr. Miestis and, and myself, and several other people went on a tour. I think it was, I looked it up, what was it, like, two thousand thirteen or something?
About a year and a half ago, two, two years ago, yeah.
So, we went on a tour, and we saw it, um, and at that time, the architect on the Newtown Hall, at the time, when they were doing their presentations, were saying, quoting a number like two and a half million dollars in renovations needed to be done. So, we immediately did the tour of the building, because we obviously didn't wanna get stuck with something. So, uh, our conclusion at that time, and we made public, was that it was more in the order of like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, correct me if I'm going off, it was more like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Most of it was just painting, uh, carpeting. The, the architect was assuming we were gonna rip out walls and reconfigure the building and everything, but we don't need to do that.
No.
Since then, though, um, 'cause three years later, they've been having trouble with the boilers and other things now. So, another tour, I think, is definitely, I, I mean, we definitely want Arthur to get in there.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think, through you, Mr. Chair, um, I do believe that, um, we have identified, uh, with the town manager and, and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, that there is genuine interest in the school committee, um, assuming that building. Uh, I, I want everyone to, to be clear that our communications have been around refresh and refurbish, not renovate, and we've tried to be clear on that. We, we may have to add a couple of walls for, uh, our purposes and office privacy, um, but we believe that, you know, we can, we can go in there and, and refresh, clean things that haven't been cleaned, paint where needs to be painted, carpet where carpet needs to be placed. Our thing, our biggest concern is, um, the facility itself and HVAC, um, air conditioning units, some need to be replaced, um, some trim paint, you know, but by no means are we gonna go in there and do a two-and-a-half to five-million-dollar renovation to meet our needs. We, we would, we would mold to, to the configuration of that space. What we'll be leaving at, uh, South Meadow Road, um, I mean, South Meadow Road is purely an office, and we do have safes, uh, all those records have to come with us. Uh, there are adequate, um, locked, uh, fireproof safes at Town Hall, um, so we would relocate all of that. The attic, it's sent, you probably don't know, there's an attic at, at our, in our office. It's all records, they're dated records, we need to take that with us. Uh, Ms. Darg is responsible and took it upon herself to get people to get up there and clean regularly for the last five to eight years, um, so it's pretty orderly. Um, but we would take furniture and equipment, everything that's in there, we would take. Uh, we have a server, uh, structure in there that would, um, be reallocated, but, um, our plan is to leave the building in good condition. I think that building is, um, is in, it, it will be a saleable building, and I think they would do okay with it. I, I mean, we have, we have kept it up, so, I, you know, we can get into that discussion further, but I, I do believe that I'd like to see this item on a Board of Selectmen agenda, so that they can acknowledge and, and know that we're interested, and they have a vote to say that this is gonna happen, because I think there's still some, some motivation to, to say otherwise.
Ms. Badger?
I mean, we've already taken two motions and two, and had discussion here, I don't even know how many times about that. Should we write, like, a formal letter to the board?
Or go in person?
And, and then ask them to make room for us on their agenda or something?
So, we have to have another joint, we have to have another joint con, uh, meeting, according to the charter, so, um, we could do it at our next joint, or we could do it before that, just go in and, Dr. Sorenz?
I appreciate what you're saying. There's still one large question mark, and that's the HVAC system. I mean, I, I, if, if, if the superintendent and the chair is confident that that system isn't gonna cost a million dollars to replace, uh, then I, I feel that we could, should send a letter of intent, or do whatever we have to do to make this clear that we're making this move. However, that's the big question mark at this point in my, somebody needs to, I think, give us a number, at least on what we're walking into.
Correct. So, that's where we are now, so...
Yeah, I think that the-
Why don't we, yeah, we need to, what, meet with Melissa and, and just rearrange that tour meeting that we had?
Yeah, just so that, I, I think they need to be, um, every, everyone on the, on, you know, the Board of Selectmen and, and Town Manager, I think everyone would feel more comfortable if we know what we're getting into. Um, and I think there was some discussion recently that we're just taking it over, it's not gonna cost anything. The, the thing that's gonna happen, I can see it happening already. We had a failed boiler this, this winter. Um, there, there's known HVAC consistency issues. Um, there's a generator on-site. I'd like to actually, I mean, I'm not sure how many people know that, the whole entire network of the town of Plymouth exists in that building.
That used to be the emergency center.
Absolutely. So, there's a generator there that has to be looked at. We'd like to get, um, uh, that inspected, to see what that entails. But, you know, I think, three years ago when we looked at it, two years ago when we looked at it, I think we were talking, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That, that might have gone up, I don't know, but I think there is some level with them to have it walked through, and maybe have an assessment of, of what it would take to get it into moving condition.
So...
I think, I think that, we have to have that information first.
Right. So, can we proceed with, uh, reaching out, setting that up?
Yep.
And, um, once we have that, at our next meeting, we'll reiterate our-
Position.
Depending on what it comes back with, uh, we'll reiterate our position, yea or nay. And then, we're also gonna wanna do the same thing with the Mount Pleasant location. Um, since tonight, we know we just freed up that building, there are different things that it can be used for. Obviously, it could be sold, but it could also be an alternative high school, or... There are a few options, so, um, so both, and they both intertwine, so it's not like they're two different things. They intertwine, so, 'cause administration could go to Mount Pleasant, and the alternative high school goes to Lincoln Hall. Who knows what scenarios could play out? Yeah, or you could just stay there, yeah. It would be nice to have you in the heart of town, though, rather than out on the border.
Mount Pleasant is a better view.
So, you'll set something up and let me know. I want to be a part of that one.
Yeah, I would, what I will do, set something up, and then we'll get a walking tour of that plant.
Let's make sure we have all the people that are saying they have a stake, so, you know, David Peck and, you want to be a part of that tour?
Sure. I didn't know what you're talking about.
The tour, the tour of Town Hall.
Sure. Whatever you want me to do, I'll do.
We have to watch the form, so we can't go over three.
Oh, okay. If you have any space, let me know. I might want to.
Because we can't go over three.
Right, okay.
Okay?
Probably want to do it after business hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's kind of hard.
It's too disruptive, otherwise.
But we'll, we'll see what we can do, okay?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, good.
That's a long time to go to the game, boy.
Appointments, leaves of absence, and resignations. We have quite a few, actually.
I have that unless, I have it if you want me to. I can just get it right here. So, tonight, we have no certificated appointments. We have two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, 20, 21 coach advisor appointments. Classified appointments, two, four, six, eight, nine. Leaves of absence, we have two, long-term disability, one, and we have four resignations.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Accounts payable warrant, Ms. Badger?
School committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost and or transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S022516 dated February 25th, 2016, in the amount of $1,932,131.36 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Ms. Hunt? Second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Let's go through the minutes. January 4th, first. Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the January 4th minute as presented.
Second? Mr. Morgan seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anonymous.
I move the January 4th.
Speak up.
Okay. I'll move the January 5th minutes as presented.
Okay. Second? Ms. Badger seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anonymous. Now, January 25th. I don't think you were at 25th.
I'm abstaining.
Anybody? Ms. Hunt?
I move that the minutes of the January 25th, right?
Fifth, yeah, 25th.
School committee meeting be accepted and approved as presented.
Second? Mr. Morgan seconds it? Any further discussion? Dr. Sorenson?
One, one correction, which occurs on the bottom of page seven on the building committee reports. The third line from the bottom, it reads, he, references me, mentioned that waterfront condo developers may privately fund a parking garage. That's inaccurate. It should read waterfront condo developers expressed some interest in participating in the development of a parking garage. That's a big difference from paying for.
Big difference, yeah. So, then, amending the motion for that correction. Any further discussion? No? And all those, all the, that's right, you weren't there. All those in favor? And two abstentions?
Yeah.
Did you get that one? Two abstentions. All right. A little over. That brings us to an end of tonight, our agenda for tonight. We have an executive session, though, but we, when we come back, we will be just to adjourn. So, do I have a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Morgan?
Session?
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of contract negotiations.
Do I have a second? Ms. Badger seconds it? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And we are now going into executive session, again, coming out just to adjourn.